Hello, everyone, and welcome. It is 6:30, and we're set to begin. On your screen, you'll see that there's a QR code that links to some responses from the candidates to questions we asked about their backgrounds and some information ahead of time, so that in lieu of making an opening statement, everyone has access to that to read. Thank you to Northville Public Schools for the use of the Zoom webinar format this evening, and for the district staff for assisting us in technology issues. Thank you. My name is Tanya Pittin. I am the PTA President for the Northville Council of PTAs. This is my second year. I also serve on the Board of Directors for Michigan PTA. I'm a resident of Northville Township for 12 years. My husband and I have a fourth grader here in the district at Winchester Elementary, and we're excited to be here tonight. Next slide, please. All of our Northville PTAs operate as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit in the state of Michigan. We're nonpartisan and do not endorse any of the candidates here this evening. We don't endorse any candidates running in any election. PTA tends to show their support and advocate for ballot issues and proposals, but we are nonpartisan. On your ballot, you will see nine candidates listed, one of whom is not actively campaigning, according to Northville Township Clerk's Office. Also, there's a write-in candidate seeking election. All 10 of these candidates were invited to attend tonight's forum this evening. Tonight, we have seven of the candidates with us. The forum questions were designed with stakeholder input, which was received through a variety of means, including questions submitted to the northville school board cues@gmail.com email address over the last few weeks. Requests for input was also communicated through social media pages of the school district, PTA, and the community. The flyer has also been shared during PTA meetings, Board of Education meetings, and through other community sources. There will be no real-time attendee interaction tonight, such as a Q&amp;A or chat feature box. We would like to note, though, that the readers of our questions were not the -- did not originally submit those questions. They're helping us out tonight by reading them, and they do not reflect questions -- they do not reflect the reader themselves. We will begin with each candidate having the opportunity to answer each question. The questions will be displayed on the screen along with a digital timer to count down from 30 -- 60 seconds, one minute to answer. When the time has expired, the candidate's microphone will be muted. We're anticipating asking eight questions this evening. However, we reserve the right to answer only seven if time does not allow for our eighth question. The order in which the candidates will answer each question will rotate. Random order of these candidates was achieved by using the pickerwheel.com and shared with the candidates ahead of time. Here's the lineup for this evening. First question will go to Mr. Wilson, then Ms. Kimberly Campbell Voitel, Ms. Sherri Winfield, Mr. Harrah Kalkarni, Mr. James Missourik, Ms. Lisa McIntyre, Ms. Sarah Prescott, and then rotate from there. The forum is being recorded and will be available on the Northville Public Schools website. Let's get started. Next slide, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mamtha Balasubramaniam. I'm the past president of Moraine PTA, and I currently have a sixth grader at Hillside. My question to each of you tonight is, what are your thoughts on how the Board of Education should balance the needs of students, teachers, staff, and families in making decisions during a crisis? Thank you.
Hi. Thank you, everyone, joining tonight. I think I'm on now. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Mamtha. My name's Lindsay Wilson. Great question here. How do you balance? I think you just switched to question two. How do you balance the needs? First and foremost, boards are elected by the community, and the community as a whole. That means families, parents, teachers, whoever lives in the community votes, and people who will forge the vision for the district and be responsible for setting the district's priorities and goals, which focus around the academic achievement and, I think, health and happiness of all of our students. So the number-one priority is always focusing on academic achievement of our kids, and then other interests obviously should come into play. When we're talking about a critical situation, a crisis like COVID, you need to balance safety, health, those kinds of risks that are posed potentially to not only our kids in schools, but teachers, staff, parents, our families. So I think you balance across the entire set of interests, primarily focusing on the needs of students and their academic achievement, but there's a wider set of considerations that we must always keep in consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell Voitel.
Yes. I think it's a great question, and it certainly does capture the crisis that we have been working through together since the spring. I, you know, my impression is if, in a crisis, which is not defined in the question, the first obligation of all adults involved is to see to the safety of the child. If we're talking about a crisis that's unfolding that is impacting the safety of school staff and children, you know, we've got to see equitably to the needs of both. Certainly, it's got to do with the environmental safety and their health, but also their emotional welfare. So I have spoken to a lot of families and teachers, and I think the charge in any crisis is to make the best immediate decision, but then to look forward with strategic planning and see to a good balance of the needs between teachers, families, kids, and school staff.
Thank you. Up next, Ms. Winfield.
First, I'd like to thank you for allowing me to participate today, and clearly, this question represents the pandemic that we're all facing today. So to me, the first thing that the board would need to look at, one, what is the severity of the crisis that we're facing, and what is the impact, and who is it impacting? I see from the list that's on the screen is most of the stakeholders, as I would call them, are listed. The only other one I would probably add is the community. So I consider the school board as the custodians of our children's future. So first and foremost, we're here to ensure that they get a good education, but when something like a pandemic comes along, their health and safety is primary in my mind. I also don't think it's an either-or question, health or safety or education. I think it's health and safety and education. We're used to very high standards and getting very good academic results. So inside the question is kind of the answer. Who do we need to look to? All of the stakeholders that it impacts, and I think we need to offer parents alternatives and choices, because no one-size-fits-all. If you're in an elementary school, if you're at Cook School, or if you're in a high school, that answer could look differently. So one of our responsibilities is to ensure that we do it in a collaborative fashion that keeps the health and safety and academics of all of our children at the forefront. Thank you.
Mr. Kalkarni, you can unmute yourself.
Okay. Sorry about that. You know, the Board of Education must alleviate the community, parent concern of hitting the breakpoint among the COVID-19 concern and student educational needs and future career and paying for it. For this, the Board of Education must insist on both educational accomplishments as well as about the character, value, and identify not just being a smart, because character is most important, and intelligence is just a tool. Character determines how you use that tool. To me, the character and the identity must be respected, and all the beliefs or different diversity must be respected. That is my concern. That is my suggestion, not concern. Sorry about that. And I would say encourage positive competition at all levels. Lastly, communicate with the parent-student concern. Let the parents explain the proper approaches to take care of the concerns.
Mr. Missourik.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jim Missourik. You know, there really is a symbiotic relationship between students and teachers. In other words, one can't succeed without the other. I believe from a student's standpoint that every family situation is unique, and really only the parents can determine what's best for their children. So because of that, you need to give choices to students. That same basic concept really has to go along with our staff. One of the reasons we're so successful as a district is because we have an outstanding staff who goes above and beyond all the time, but we need to take into account their unique situations as well. There are some people that, you know, have risk factors to themselves, or they may have risk factors to their family, or, in my particular instance, my mother-in-law is 81. And so why we choose one or the other, really, it depends on unique circumstances. So I think we need to take both into account, give them equal footing, and just like we give choices to our students and families, we need to give those similar kinds of choices
Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you first for the opportunity tonight. I think it is a really delicate balance when you're looking at a crisis like COVID-19. I think that as families, it takes a lot of effort to manage online schooling, to support our kids, and also maintain our own careers and professional development. But I think in a crisis like this, the most important aspect to look at is really health and safety, and health includes physical health and mental health. I think there are so many challenges presenting to students that also require some attention, and as we focus mostly on academics, that is obviously what we are here to do and maintain an equitable opportunity for all students. It is important for us to balance what we're able to deliver to students along with what we want to deliver. So really looking at supporting our teachers and our staff so that they are -- so that their needs are also being met in terms of their health risks and their challenges and their own family situations. It's such a delicate balance, and I think that that is a heavy weight then on the Board of Education as well, as the board is guiding the community in terms of how do we provide an adequate education that we are all expecting of our district. Also, looking at the unique needs of all of our students. Like Ms. Winfield said, one size does not fit all, so really taking all those aspects into consideration is very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Prescott. If we can make sure all other candidates have their microphones muted at this time. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Yes, I am Sarah Prescott. It's wonderful to be here, and thank you to our PTA and Mamtha for this question. It is a great one. I think great leaders follow what we learn and teach all the way back at kindergarten, looking for win-wins, and I think if they don't, if they aren't looking for them, they ought to be building them, and that's how I approach this question. I don't think that there is a dichotomy between the interests of families, including parents and children on the one hand, and our teachers on the other. That hasn't been my experience as a board member, as a mom, as an observer of what goes on in our schools. I think our teachers want what's best for kids. I think our parents want what's best for kids. So I think that they -- it's a little bit of a false flag to think that there are real differences. I think we build or we find common ground, and we build from there because we're all in it together. I think that also we have to be thinking about not just COVID-19, but when you sit on this board, the next crisis, and kids have to be at the center of that.
Thank you.
Hello. It's Ron Selick, and I have a son at Hillside and another one at Moraine, and the question I have is, if elected, how would you approach establishing, approving, and monitoring the school district's budget?
I think I'm first.
Yes.
Thank you, Tanya. The budget is one of the key roles of a school board, is to act as a fiduciary over the monetary resources of the district to ensure that they're prudently managed and that they are sufficient to meet the goals and vision that we have set. So in terms of establishing and approving and monitoring the district's budget, this is an active item on this, at each meeting's agenda, and I think that it does call upon setting some priorities, especially if we're anticipating some reductions or challenges to the per-pupil spending or per-pupil funding that we will receive from the state. And I think the priorities for me would be to, at all costs, to protect any reductions from impacting our instructional excellence in our teachers. So keeping those, any kinds of threats away, as far away as possible from those aspects of our responsibility as a board would be my priority. Thank you.
Next, Ms. Winfield.
Thank you. I have worked at Fort Motor Company for about 28 years, and in those years, I've had responsibility for managing multimillion-dollar budgets. And you first start out with, well, you know, what is it that we're trying to achieve? And the first part is, what are the district's goals? And obviously, there is already a budget year-over-year that hopefully addresses what those particular goals are. There should be monthly monitoring to ensure that our spending is going toward those goals, that we are being accountable, and that we are being transparent, and the things that we're spending the money on is giving the return on investment that our students, teachers, and staff require. So with that being said, at times, though, like the situation we're in now, we're faced with a pandemic, so then you may have to reprioritize, and then that's when the board would have to come together and reestablish some priorities and perhaps shift some funding to take care of those things that are most impactful and needed in this time. Thank you.
Up next, Mr. Kalkarni. Mr. Kalkarni, you can unmute yourself.
I would really concentrate on balancing the budget. I was working at Fort Motor Company for almost 44 years, and as a technical manager, I learned the technique of how to balance the budget and meet the required objectives of the project. The project we have right now is how to maintain the good teachers and make that Northville as a final destination. So I would say that the teachers' needs, as well as community needs and student needs, are far most important. So in this situation, I would try to do is observe or recall teacher placement need to be based on their accomplishment and excellence in the specific subjects and interrelation with the students and the school needs. Now, also, student, also, the teacher need to recall review the award made increase based on the yearly performance and how the students and the community is benefiting with their thing. I would say, I would request that the teacher's final destination should be Northville School. That's where the budget is going to be.
Thank you. Up next, Mr. Missourik.
Okay. As many of you might know, I spent eight years on the board, so I do have some background on how the budgets are set and how things are managed. The entire board actually works with Mike Zoff, who's the Superintendent of Finance, and we work together to establish the budget for all the specific different areas. In fact, right now, I think close to 80% of our budget goes towards actually teaching itself and not towards staff and other kinds of things, or, excuse me, not towards leadership staff. Second thing is, we have a budget subcommittee, and that's made up of three of the board members who meet on a regular basis roughly every two weeks to review issues and review where we're at. The treasurer of the board works directly hand-in-hand with Mr. Zoff and receives the monthly expenditures and actually goes through all the expenditures on a line-item-by-line-item basis to make sure that things are going according to targets and that we are closely monitoring for no excess expenditures. So it's a complicated process, but works well as a team.
Thank you. Up next, Ms. McIntyre.
Hi. Thank you. I think this is definitely a new area, but as PTA President, this is something I've had experience with as well in terms of looking at a budget and looking at the income that we're receiving and collaborating with my teammates, both with the administration as well as with the other people on the board, so that we can really take a look at, you know, what are our priority goals? And this year at Ridgewood, we have really adjusted some of our priorities to focus on health and wellness, as it's become such a priority during the pandemic, as, you know, as we're supporting teachers and students in such a unique situation. So I think that that relates well to what role a board member, a school board member, would have also in terms of collaborating with Mike Zoff, with the budget team that I just learned about. I think that the board's role is to guide and direct the path, set some new priorities when different things arise in terms of opportunities. I also think sometimes creative funding through grants can support some new academic programs as well. So thank you.
Up next, we have Ms. Prescott.
Hi, everyone. This is a great question as well, and thank you, Ron, for it. I would say that our record on this is really almost unmatched with other school districts. Northville Schools has a goal of having 11% in savings. We had 28% at the close of last year. We have an incredibly low ratio of overhead. We've been able to manage multiple teacher raises during my time on the board. Our bond rating is superior. We have beat our budgets. We're not just balancing our budgets. In the last couple of years, we've beat our budgets by millions of dollars. We do that with an incredible team and with a lot of teamwork. Our CFO, who Mr. Missourik referenced, is incredible. His staff is wonderful. As far as me, I have a record of standing alone, six to one, being outvoted on measures that would increase the transparency of some of our budget items. I am not afraid to be picky and in the weeds, and if I need to, to stand alone, but I think transparency and detail-orientedness are the order of the day for board members.
Up next, we have Mr. Wilson.
Hi. Fiscal management is one of the board's top priorities. I think we need to first and foremost be proactive in maintaining our fiscally stable school district and communicating to the community and amongst ourselves about our budget. You know, budgetary issues can be really challenging these days, especially in light of our state funding issues and even student enrollment fluctuations. So I think we need to carefully scrutinize every single dollar that we spend. I think we need to monitor and think carefully about whether we approve of things like bond renewals and that sort of thing. I think they're important to really monitor. I think a no-surprises kind of attitude is really important. I think, again, proactivity, communication, no surprises about where we might have a pitfall budgetarily, and I think really, across the community, we need to have greater awareness of the significant funding constraints and disadvantages that we have. We get less money from the state relative to other school districts, and we need to carefully monitor that going in the future.
Thank you. We've also had Mr. Mathie join us this evening. Mr. Mathie, you're up next. You can unmute.
Thank you very much. I apologize for the delay in getting on. I stand with Ms. Prescott in the issue of transparency. If we're going to make the most of the resources we have available, then everyone needs to be on the same page in order to get behind the decisions that we're going to make and ensure that the direction that we choose as a community has the full support of the members of the community itself. I believe that while we should hope for no surprises, in all reality, we are headed into an era of mostly surprises, and what we're going to need to do is to ensure that the exemplary history that the board has with establishing and maintaining a budget and working toward getting a surplus continues, but also that we are always looking for ways to best leverage the resources we have available to ensure that we maintain a level of educational integrity here in Northville.
Thank you. Next slide, please.
My name is Elise Spinkowski. I'm a sophomore at Northville High School, and I'm the president of the Northville GSA. My question was, what priorities, initiatives, or policies will you advocate for as a board member that will promote diversity, equity, and inclusion for all stakeholders in this school district?
Thank you. We'll begin with the rotation as it was stated, and Mr. Mathie, you're up first.
Thank you very much. I am a huge proponent of taking proactive steps to ensure that diversity is more than a conversation, especially in Northville. I believe that the only way this is going to happen is through very deliberate actions. If we seek to fill a position, then if we're going to ensure diversity, then we need to ensure that we also have multiple qualified candidates of minority status before we start going down the same road that we have in the past. I think that anything short of a concerted effort not only robs our community of the diversity and the vibrance of different perspectives, but it also robs our children that we expect to grow to be the leaders of tomorrow from having perspective that is going to help them to better understand and relate to the world in which they're going to be living.
Thank you. Ms. Winfield.
This one is one that's very near and dear to my heart, and it's actually one of the priorities that I have listed as something that I would want to do something more about if elected, and it's obviously quite personal. One of the main reasons I ran was because of my two daughters. One is a graduate from 2018 of the high school, and my daughter, second daughter, is a sophomore. And I have seen a change in the district that I didn't see initially, and it's really around diversity. My older daughter had a much more favorable experience, but I'm noticing a lot of the things that are happening in the greater community are seeping into our schools. We are very good and very proud of our academics, but I believe diversity is important. The district needs to make programs visible to everyone as to how we feel. I feel every child deserves to feel safe and respected and valued, no matter what your race or gender or whatever, and that is something I would work toward, to put in real programs that bring real results. And that is something I would work toward, to put in real programs that bring real results.
Mr. Kolcarney, you're up next. You can unmute.
I should, we should really focus on the positive aspects of diversity culture, because diversity is a strength in the community so that we can understand each other's behavior, each other's culture, and how they can contribute towards the well-being of the community. And that is what my, the top priority is. How do I teach students to really improve their characters and their beliefs in the diversity nature? And to me, that, again, I said, repeat myself, characters, values, and identity are now the most important. And intelligence is just a tool that we should really focus on. To me, we should not be focusing or distinguishing ourselves from the identity such as diversity stories are not so good or they don't look good. That is the bad behavior. So I would really stop that bad behavior and contribute towards the positive aspects of diversity, because diversity is a strength in the community. I would really focus on that part. Thank you.
Up next, Mr. Missouri.
Thank you. I mean, I think I'm going to address this from two specific aspects. One is that our community already has about 25% of our students that come from a diverse background, meaning English is not their native language. They speak at home. Second, really, is to address the whole situation that it's kind of, you know, be in light today with George Floyd and everything else going around. I'm actually pretty proud of what the district is doing. In our five-year plan that was just updated, we reemphasized social-emotional learning as part of our five-year goal. And we newly named the Northville Care's Youth Council, which has recently established a partnership with U of M and Higera Health, which I think is a great first step of getting things going. But the real key, I think, is what happens next. And that is, there is going to be a community workshop, which starts on November 9th. And I think there's going to be a series of five meetings, which is going to participate the community and the Board of Education. And it's really a listening effort for us to kind of hear what our community is going through and what things that we don't, we aren't consciously aware of. I think our district is going to continue to become more diverse with time. So we need to address it now, and that's a good step.
Up next, Ms. Prescott.
There isn't a topic that's more important to me. I am a civil rights lawyer. I've spent many years on the Advisory Committee to the U.S. Civil Rights Commission. This is an aspect I could talk about for hours. I guess I will say that I don't think it lends itself to a one-minute. It requires sustained attention on all of our parts. I personally ran for this Board of Education in the very first place because of work with children who were special needs and I felt were not adequately represented. I think that our non-native-born folks, but also they have different issues and interests than minorities who are American-born, we need to be sensitive to that. I have been all over this issue on the board. I just recently finished helping our outside council rewrite our Title IX regs. I think we need to work on hiring and retention of teachers that look more like our diverse students. I think we need to be accountable on how we punish students when there's issues that arise. So lots more to say, but in this one minute, that's where I'd start.
Thank you. I apologize. Ms. McIntyre actually was in line to go next. Ms. McIntyre.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I think this is one of my issues that I take most to heart, that I think it's very important for the school board to really take a look at the bias that each of us bring to the role. And I think expanding that also to the administration to do some deep diving into what are the challenges that each of us bring to the table. We have such a diverse community. Everybody really is attracted to our community because of our amazing school district. And I think uncovering some of those deep unseated unawareness, lack of awareness that we have about our own challenges that we bring in terms of what we don't want to look at, and really working to bring our community together. I think training our staff to also be comfortable talking about the bias that they bring to the role as educators. I think that our, the challenge that we're also looking at is not just race. We're looking at sexual orientation, religion, expanding our curriculum to be more inclusive and be more representative of our community. And even if it's different from state standards, being okay with adopting some different approaches to education. Thank you.
Mr. Wilson, up next.
Thank you. Student inclusion is one of my top priorities as well. I actually started my career as a federal prosecutor, where the Department of Justice trusted me with serving the public interest and doing the right thing. I think being inclusive is the right thing to do. We have a fantastic school district. We're in the top 10 any way you slice it. But there are a number of kids that fall through the cracks here in this district. I've heard from parents and students alike about that. I think about inclusion across a wide spectrum that includes race, ethnicity, financial status, social status. So I would start with tone at the top. I think that's critically important. The board, the administration, staff, principals need to set a tone of inclusiveness, create that climate of inclusiveness. The other thing that I would do was, don't leave it to the people that need the help to do the work. I think if you're able to help, you should be able to do the work, and we should be mindful about virtual learning. I think that creates, that can isolate students and widen gaps. So we need to be mindful of that while we're in virtual learning right now.
Thank you. Ms. Campbell Voitel.
Yes, I am the candidate with public health background. So of course, diversity and equity are keystones for the practice of public health. I also am attracted to, and remind myself of what our district has defined as the graduate profile for our students. And one of those, the aspects of our graduates, when they're completed with our system, is a world-class citizen. And in that definition refers to being a contributed member of a global society. And so in order to achieve that, we really have to present students with an opportunity to practice those skills. I think that happens right boldly with a bold review of the curriculum to make sure that we're introducing and reinforcing those principles. It involves involving student voice, who can talk to us about the kinds of bias they run into outside of the classroom. And it is a community-level, all the way to the school board, effort to transform all of our systems. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to question four.
Hi, thank you for inviting me to ask a question tonight. My name is Rishika Nioli. I'm a junior at Northville High School, and I'm the president of Color My World, a mental health awareness and suicide prevention club. So my question for the candidates today is, an unintended consequence of the pandemic is increased social isolation of students with disabilities. How would you, as a board member, work to increase inclusion for this population now and into the future?
Thank you. We'll begin with Ms. Winfield.
I think this is a really important question. And while I think it might impact students with disabilities even more so than students otherwise, in my opinion, actually, technology has helped in this regard. And where I'm going with this is, I am an office worker, and after the pandemic, we were all sent home. And it's very different. I miss the camaraderie. So students would also miss that camaraderie. And some of the things I see where people are being more creative is in the use. I'd never been on a Zoom call, you know, until this happened. So what I would do is encourage some of the extracurricular organizations, as well as what's going on in the classrooms, to actually take some of that time to actually socialize in a creative way. So I'll give you a friend since I've been invited to Zoom birthday parties. At first, I was like, oh my, what is this going to be like? But it actually, this was through my church, but it actually helped us reconnect. So I think that's one idea, but obviously, it's something that would need exploration and collaboration to come up with more options. Thanks.
Mr. Kolcarney, you're up next. You can unmute. We might have lost Mr. Kolcarney's connection. We will save his spot and come back to him if we're able to connect. Let's move ahead with Mr. Missouri.
So I think there's multiple aspects, and I don't think you just focus on people who have disabilities. I think this really affects all of our students. Some of you may know that we already have a situation in our schools where there is a high degree of stress of students wanting to achieve, you know, above and beyond. We actually had two suicides in the last four years. And so this issue of stress and isolation already exists. I think the pandemic has actually just made things even worse. As we've been isolated, we've walked away from face-to-face, and it's just electronic. And while that may be a short substitute, it isn't really a way to replace it. You know, we're starting to talk about a new idea here called pandemic fatigue. One of the things that we need to do is to get our parents and really everyone else to realize that depression's real, it's an illness, and we shouldn't hide it. And that's one of the situations that happened. We're training our counselors, and if we can get parents to get more involved and allow the counselors to interface, maybe we can use it as a way to diffuse some of these situations.
Up next, we'll go with Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. I think that in our community, we have such a rich diversity, also with students with disabilities. And I think it's something that many people aren't aware of, that Cook School is such an opportunity for our younger students and even our middle school students and high school students to have some volunteer opportunities with. I know that our high school, our National Honor Society students help with the Special Olympics program through our high school. And I think that there could be some more visibility in our community in terms of students who are disabled. We have a lot of people, a lot of students in our community that use wheelchairs. And I think increasing an awareness of that and how we might be able to give some language to students who are not disabled, to be able to kind of bridge that gap a little bit in terms of opportunity, because I think it's a great life lesson for our students. So I'd like to see us really as a board, kind of put that out there as one priority as well. And I think it does also relate perhaps to mental health and to other challenges. But I think that would also reduce some isolation in terms of our community. Thank you.
Ms. Prescott.
There's an old saying that if you want to run faster, you have to run faster. And I think that it's true that when you're talking about special needs kids, if you want to include them, you need to include them. And every parent of every special needs kid, and I've worked with some of them very closely and sometimes for years, that I know, all they ever wanted was for their kids to be included. And what I've seen in this district that I would hold up and advocate for in this pandemic or any other time are peer-to-peer programs. I've probably been moved to tears three or four times as a board member in the last five years. But probably one of the most memorable presentations out of hundreds and hundreds of meetings is the peer-to-peer program at Meets Now. This is a program that we can take online or we can take to someone's home. And this is not a program for disabled or special needs kids. This is a program for the peer and the other peer, for both kids. They, if you don't know about it, I invite you to read about it. But my answer would be human-to-human contact.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Yeah, I've talked about this a little bit already tonight. Virtual learning unfortunately has that consequence of creating gaps, creating further isolation. The American Academy of Pediatrics has actually talked a lot about this. They're raising that issue with the federal government. So first and foremost, we need to be really mindful of what the AAP is saying, whether they're able to successfully get more money for the types of programs that we could put in place to help our kids that are feeling isolated or that have disabilities. The second thing I would do is, you know, my daughter, when she was at Hillside, she participated in a program. It was an outreach program where they visited kids at Cook School. We need to do more of that, more programs like that that are creating connections. I've heard Principal Koski at the high school say this a couple of times now. Students need to find a way to make the school smaller. Well, that's really hard for kids who already feel isolated to do. It's great advice, but we need to find ways to actually create those connections for kids and get them meeting and making connections so that they don't feel so isolated. Those are the two or three things that I would do.
Up next, Ms. Campbell Voitel.
Yes, these have all been really great comments, and I appreciate hearing about the peer-to-peer experience example that you gave, Sarah. What comes to my mind is that we've worked really hard. I'm sure that we've worked really hard with our students in the Cook Center to provide them with accommodations so they can operate technology if you just want to deal on that level. But I do think that as we're designing learning now online for kids across a wide range of ability and maybe having some disability. It could be visual, it could be auditory, it could be disability in terms of dealing face-to-face on a Zoom meeting format for a lesson. So I think that we need to design our learning units with accommodating students of a variety of abilities with the way we present materials and that we configure kids into groups that allow them to reinforce and work together, which connects them. Thank you.
I'll be moving on to the next question.
I believe so.
I have not yet had an opportunity to answer. Am I still connected?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. Mr. Mathie, go ahead.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I, for the last six, seven years, I have spent my time traveling the world, working with young boys with Duchenne muscular dystrophy and spinal muscle atrophy. I am acutely aware of many of the challenges that those individuals face who do not fit the mold of a standard student. My daughter, eldest daughter, just graduated, is also someone who's struggled with attention deficit disorder and anxiety disorders. I believe that the technology we now have available and the current situation we should find ourselves due to the COVID pandemic actually has provided us with an experimental environment of opportunity, where I think we can bring the new technologies and test different models of education so we can reach the students where they learn, as they learn, and also look for ways to bring them together and actually leverage the technology we have to make them feel more a part of the community and more engaged.
Thank you. We're still having some trouble connecting Mr. Kolcarney. We'll move on to question number five.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ashna Kethan, and I'm a senior at Northville High School. I'm a captain on the swim and science Olympia teams and offer for National Honor Society, and I have a younger brother at Ameren. So the question that I'm asking is, many Northville graduates go on, whoops, many Northville graduates many Northville graduates go on to four-year colleges and universities. Students also choose to attend community colleges, technical training, or to enter the workforce. What do you think the board should do to support students making these decisions?
Thank you. Noticing Mr. Kalkarni is still unable to connect, we're going to move along to Mr. Missouri first.
How you doing? I think it's an issue we need to deal with as a community with parents. For some reason, we seem to believe that success is only defined by a four-year college degree, and that's wrong. It's not for everybody. We need to do a better job of communicating to all of our students that success looks different based on every individual and that you can succeed in lots of different ways. There are many people who became millionaires who never had college degrees. Entrepreneurs who had ideas and just built on it. People who went to technical training and probably are making more money in a career profession and trades than half the people in our district. So success can't be defined by just a college degree, although I know that is an aspect of our community. But we need to do a better job of communicating that success really depends on the individual and what's right for him. I do think we need to provide more options to people and we do need to communicate these various options in different ways.
Ms. McIntyre.
I like this question because I think that as a high-performing district, I think as parents, we have, you know, a lot of us enter into the education system with our kids thinking that all of them are going to go to four-year schools and they're going to go to the best schools around. And I think that it is important for the board to kind of guide the community. We know that the amount of pressure that our students have been under have caused lots of mental health challenges. And evaluating some of the gaps that kids might have between their potential and their actual performance might help us identify some early barriers that maybe arise at a later age that does make some of those high-achieving, hopeful opportunities less possible. I think that one of the things we could also guide the district in would be offering some more technology opportunities for the younger students. Giving them a different understanding that it's not just about math and science, that it really is also about technology. And math and science obviously are critical to success, but offering a wider opportunity of curriculum and interest and art, looking at our music program and just expanding what we do offer in terms of changing some of that expectation a little bit as a community. Thank you.
Up next, Ms. Prescott.
I agree with everything Mr. Missouri said about, and Lisa touched on it as well, Ms. McIntyre touched on it as well, the issue of how we voice that there are many paths to happiness. So I think that's a great start. I think to be a little bit more concrete, move one step down that path. I think our high school counseling office can use some work. And our current board has been looking at, what do we need to do to work on that office? And get our students that are at that high school, that important pivotal moment, to have the support. And in particular, to meet the kids where they are in their interests. I noticed Armed Forces wasn't on this list. I think it should be right up there with technical training and alternative ideas, a community college, et cetera. But we need to meet the kids where they are. And I think a concrete and valuable step forward here would be in doing a little work to rework and potentially upstaff our counseling offices at the high school.
Mr. Wilson, up next.
Hi, thank you. You know, the board is entrusted with having a vision that takes account of all of our students, every student. So every student in our district is not going to be in Alps. Every student in our district is not going to go to the University of Michigan. I think, again, tone from the top is really important here. We need to define some goals here, including our vision that it's a great thing to go to community college, a technical school, to pursue a trade. We need to define that. And if that really is a goal of ours, then we need to pursue it like a goal. Building metrics around it, devoting funds and programs to it. I think there's a lot of kids, like I've said, that fall through the cracks. Maybe they're not the high achievers. They're not the Alps students, but these kids have really bright futures. We need to tell them that they have a bright future, even if they're not in some of these advanced programs, the IB program, and define ways to be successful and enable them to pursue those kinds of dreams.
Ms. Campbell Voight-Hall.
Yes, actually, what I would say is one of my key interest areas is career vocational educational opportunities in this district. And I have reached out to some of our past Volk Tech faculty to kind of fill me in. One of the problems we have with setting a fire, the imagination of all of our students, is the fact that it's hard to integrate the time in the school day for a high school student to get to Livonia to take advantage of all the vocational opportunity that we're invested in here as a district. And this is one of the things that Dwayne Reesup provides is the Volk Tech resources. But we can't get students there because the transportation, the scheduling, problems with the high school are an issue. I would look at that as one of the barriers to transitioning kids to other opportunities.
Mr. Matthew.
Thank you. This is actually one of the questions that's really near and dear to my heart. As a Marine, an entrepreneur, engineer, scientist, inventor, at one point musician, I've had so many different jobs in my career path. It's wound for years and years and has really been one of discovery and exploration. So I can tell you firsthand the value of getting your hands out there and touching and engaging in all the different opportunities and supporting students to explore beyond the expectations that they're going to go off to before your university and get a desk job and do what it is that their parents did or what society tells them they ought. Needs to be really changed. And we need to take every step to get our students engaged and getting their hands dirty. It was heartbreaking when the Village Workshop shut down. It was one of my favorite places and I met many students who also got in there and really developed a sense about themselves.
Ms. Winfield.
I agree with a number of the things that the panel has already indicated. When I look at the demographics of the township and of the town, I kind of see why there is a leaning toward a four-year degree because most people do have that and beyond here. So this is something I think we would have to be really intentional about. That success isn't just defined as, you know, a four-year degree or postgraduate degree. I work very closely with the UAW and the IBW and I definitely see the need, especially in the trades. We're always looking for electricians and we just are putting in place at our Cleveland plant an apprentice program for electricians there because we don't have one right now. And I mean, it's just a world of possibility. I look at where the technology is going in manufacturing and there's definitely a need there and people definitely have an opportunity to make a good living in that space. So I think we need to just kind of broaden our horizons as to exactly what success looks like and communicate that to the students.
Mr. Kalkarni, you can unmute yourself.
This question is really dear, very dear to me. I'm coming from technical side and I worked at Ford Motor Company on a plant as a technical manager for 44 years. To me, what I like to do is I like to establish technical facility in all schools. I know currently at the schools are bussed to Livonia to learn technical thing. And to me, that is unfair because some of the transportation may not be available. Also, I like to lead students to work in a competition such as national robotics team and make them hardware and use their knowledge to optimize the hardware so that they can learn how to build the hardware and how to compete in competitions. So this way, they'll be well-trained to go into workforce that is necessary. So this is the technical training I like to work on. This is my top priority as a technical manager at Ford Motor Company. Thank you.
Move on to question number six.
Hello, my name is Kelly Johnson and I am a teacher here at MPS. I've worked at Cook School for 16 years. My question for you all this evening is, how do you view the need for non-academic services, support services in our schools, such as social workers, psychologists, counselors, and nurses as part of our social emotional learning focus?
Thank you. And we'll begin with Mr. Missouri.
Actually, Tanya, I went first last time.
Oh, I apologize. Mr. Kalkarni, we'll put you in first here.
This will be related to the to the, what do you call, the bullying and other things and also the safety of community as a counselor as well as teachers. To me, I would have more counselors and nurses at schools so that they can examine the health of students as well as teachers. See, the student need for a constant reminder about how to maintain the good health and how to work together and still maintain the state and the local health requirement. As a part of social emotional learning, we need counselor as well as psychiatrist to help students to take care of their problem. And also, students should be felt that they can approach counselor and still their privacy is maintained at a good level. So this would be my top priority. Thank you.
All right, my apologies. We'll keep going with, we'll begin then with Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. As a mental health professional for the past 30 years, this is an area for me that is very important, especially as we're moving through the pandemic. I think that while school funding certainly is challenged in terms of how we can invest dollars into additional support staff, I think it's very important moving forward for us to reduce the caseloads that the counselors have. I think 500 students or 400 students is way too many for a trained counselor to be able to provide good intervention. It's support, sure. But I think as we look at the anxiety and the depression and the stress that students are dealing with, I think we need to offer some more hands-on options. You know, when my youngest was in, I think, first grade, there was an opportunity to do a small group with a social worker and I thought that was an amazing opportunity. I think in our community, we also have to work to reduce the stigma around mental health that sometimes it's difficult for people to identify when they're struggling, what that looks like. So starting to teach that language through a counselor or a social worker, starting from the youngest ages so that students have the tools to be able to use as they move on through their middle school and high school years. So I think it's critical importance at the moment and will continue to be so.
Ms. Prescott.
Hi there. You know, as a lawyer, I look at this as a legal issue. It certainly has legal dimensions. These are not wants. These sort of resources are needs in our district. But I also think this is a security issue for the health and safety of everyone in our district. Of course, I think it's an educational issue because you can't be learning if you're not, you know, well and if you're not feeling safe and able to be engaged in learning. But at the foundation of all of that, it's a moral issue. It is correct and right that we take care of a whole child. We don't let children be unfed at school. We don't let children be unclothed at school. We don't let them be unsafe at school. And this is an aspect of providing a reasonable, healthy, and productive environment for our students. And while I've been on the board, we've increased our social worker, our counselor allocations. We've applied for grant funding. We've, as I mentioned in my last answer, looked at the counseling offices. So we're working on it. It needs more work as we go forward.
Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Student mental health, happiness, and inclusion is one of my top priorities. It's possibly my number one. We need to have unwavering focus on student mental health. We need counselors and social workers to do it. I can personally attest to the benefits of those kinds of programs. I'm happy to see that, you know, New Hope is one of our district's partner programs. My family's actually used those services in a really tragic time. So I could attest to that. I'll communicate that down. I'll push hard for those kinds of resources. You know, kids face a lot of stresses these days, whether it's grades, sports team issues, family tensions, divorce. There are all kinds of things, ways for kids to fall through the cracks. We need to support them. Happy kids lead to more academic achievement. There are studies on that. So we need to devote resources to that. I think we need to recraft our goals and vision statements to make, you know, our SEL language sound a little less clinical and cold. I think we need to focus on creating a happier and healthier environment for our kids.
Up next, Ms. Campbell Voight-Hall.
Well, I am the nurse also who's on one of the candidates running. And as an advanced practice nurse, my focus has been on preventing disease in kids in school settings and in community settings. So I'm very committed to and attended to where are our nurses in our district and how available can they be to help kids with physical as well as psycho-emotional needs that they might have. We have, as I understand, a half a nurse. So not including the nurses that are allocated to Cook Center. So I do think from my perspective, we could do better in that area. Kids, yes, probably. Many of them have access through their home. But you know, kids spend an awful lot of time in school and really need to be supported if they want to or need to seek out support from social workers, nurses, and other support services. A kid in need cannot learn effectively. We must address these needs.
Up next, Mr. Matthew.
Thank you. Obviously, it's easy to agree with the other members of this panel right now. We all have a profound interest in ensuring the mental health and well-being of our students, especially during these times with COVID crisis and the disconnect that's occurring. But before COVID was part of our lexicon, the students were already under massive amounts of stress. There was anxiety disorders abounding. We tragically lost several students in the last few years. And I believe that if we're going to make a meaningful impactful change in this, it's going to require more than just additional non-academic support services. While I absolutely agree that we need to increase the number and we need to make concerted efforts to educate our children on mental health and the community at large on mental health and try and integrate that, I think it's going to require a larger systemic change to the way we approach education in Northville.
Up next, Ms. Winfield.
I think this is such an important question. And you know, when you say, what is your view for the need? I think it is absolutely critical. You know, we bring our whole selves, you know, to work, to school, whatever situations that we're in. When I came to this district 16 years ago, I was married, you know, had a three-year-old and a baby on the way. You know, some years later, unfortunately, things happened and I got divorced. And so then I found myself as a single mom, you know, extremely worried about how my daughters would adjust to this. And I'm going to give Northville, you know, some kudos on that. And I'm going to give Northville some kudos on that. My oldest was at the middle school. You know, I met with the counselor there, Mr. Wickens. My youngest was a first grader. Mrs. Thomas was her teacher. I let them know what was going on, and I got to tell you, they were extremely supportive and they understood my concern. And I really credit them for being a support when my girls were in school because we, some of us unfortunately, know the stress of what that can do to kids. And that's why I think this is a positive thing and a very critical thing. And hopefully, no one has to experience it, but unfortunately, it happens.
And Mr. Missourik.
Thank you. This is a real issue. I'm going to first start out from a situation of budget. We've only got so much money and you kind of squeeze the balloon and move it around. I think at the high school right now, we have four counselors. I think we received a grant recently to add another counselor. But honestly, we've got 2,500 students at the high school right now. It's not enough, especially with COVID and the increased stresses of, like I said, this, I may have mentioned pandemic fatigue going on. What I think the district is doing right right now is they're trying to figure out how to add more resources by working with partnerships. And so we have partnered with Higera Health, have partnered with U of M, I think someone else had mentioned New Hope. We need to continue doing that. But secondly, maybe we need to sit back with the new budget and say, are we appropriately funding this particular area? Do we have to squeeze the balloon, take something from somewhere else and add another counselor or two? Because I do think our counselors are doing the best they can. They're just stretched way too thin right now.
We'll move on to question number seven.
Good evening, candidates. My name is Simon Charles, and I am a PTA board member at Hillside Middle School. I have a son that is in the 10th grade at the high school. I have an eighth grade son at Hillside, and my daughter is a fifth grader at Thornton Creek. My question for you this evening is, given what an unusual and crucial year this has been, if elected, how do you intend to prepare for your role on the board to have the greatest positive impact come January? Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll begin with Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. I think this is a great question, and I think that some of the things that I've been doing, I think, show that I am preparing to be on this board. I think reaching out and collaborating with some of the other candidates, reaching out and understanding what are some of the challenges that administration faces, understanding funding, digging deep, reading. As a lifelong learner, I always am looking for the next book that might inform me for the next task that I'm presented with. I think stepping into this role, I think I bring a lot of important knowledge with me. I think being part of the Northville Cares experience as a PTA president, jumping in and collaborating along with that group to move forward some of these initiatives that we'd really like to see make progress in our community. I think also building a team, working with the new board members so that each of us knows that our focus, even though we might bring different perspectives to the role, that really working with the team and developing that collaborative effort to focus best on our students and our community is what I would do to prepare. Thank you.
Ms. Prescott.
Hi, so I'm the vice president of the board, and I've been on the board for five years. And of the four seats coming open, I am the only person seeking reelection. And so I will continue serving out my term through December. And depending on the voters, well, obviously, we'll start up in January. I guess what I would say about this is that I want people to think about the issue of experience because I calculated it the other day, about 30 years of board experience is going to drop off this board. And we might be left with as little as 10 years of experience combined. And a majority of the board could be totally new to Board of Education. If you've ever been to a board meeting, you know there's lots of acronyms and lots of very detailed content that is important to pick up. It's a learning curve. And so I do hope people will think a little bit about potentially voting for me and returning a little bit of experience to this board. And then I'd love to meet the new elected folks and start to build relationships with them.
Up next, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. What a great question. I think I work hard. I like getting out, meeting with folks, hearing what they have to say, figuring out what the issues are, hearing it firsthand from them. I've been reaching out to teachers, to PTAs. I've been reaching out to superintendents of other school districts that I know, other board members at other school districts that I know. I think one of the best pieces of advice that I've heard comes from a board member who told me, I look at this job as only having four years, and I want to make a difference in that four years, starting on day one. And I'm preparing now, I'll prepare for that day one come January. I've talked to folks. I understand what their concerns are. I'll come to board meetings having studied the board standards of practice. I'll come with an open mind. I'll come with a no surprises attitude. I'll be prepared. I want to make a difference on day one. I don't want to spend a lot of time getting up the learning curve. I want to make a difference on day one.
This is a great question. And you know, since July, when we all declared our candidacy, I'm sure we've all been doing our homework to the best of our ability. One of the opportunities that I took advantage of was the Michigan Association of School Board Training recently. And it was really to prepare school board members all over the state for state-level advocacy in regards to their district's needs in Lansing. And I got a chance to spend, I identified myself as a candidate. I was really upfront with that. I'm not even a member, but I am interested in what the MASP has to offer in terms of training. And it was a wonderful experience, and it gave me a sense of what's going on in the districts all over the state. Yes, I have consulted with the current school board members as well as past school board members and gotten lots of advice. Parents, teachers, students have also filled me in. I know that's my responsibility to the electorate, to be a two-way communicator and to see to their needs. So thank you very much.
Mr. Mathie.
Yes, thank you. That's an excellent question and one that I think is probably front and center on most of our minds at this point, as we all do our best to find our way to be part of this board. I've spent the time since announcing my candidacy educating myself on not just what we as a community have done and are currently doing from a board level standpoint, but also what other school districts are doing, what other programs are available, what other educational models are being applied. I spend a great deal of my time looking at the different technological tools that have been brought to bear since the COVID pandemic and familiarizing myself with how those are applied and how they might be better applied in order to realize the future of Northville education as we hope it to be. I also spend a great deal of my time reading the primary literature, keeping myself up to date on the COVID crisis and the measures that are available to protect ourselves as we go forward.
Ms. Winfield.
As someone had already mentioned, it's like the moment you throw your hat in the ring, you begin preparing right then and there. So while I clearly know what my priorities are and what I would want to do, some of the things that I have done already is to reach out to students and parents and faculty to understand what is on their hearts and their minds and what do they think we should do as a board if I'm honored to be elected as such. So that's one of the things I think would need to continue. And obviously, learning how the board operates will come. One of the things I want to mention is I do bring some skills that I personally think are very transferable to the board. You know, in my years as a human resources professional, just this year, I got some tools dropped in my toolkit I didn't expect to get, and it's because of COVID. You know, I work on the corporate return-to-work team where we develop the health and safety protocols for our workers to return to our plants, and I'm now on the global team to keep our workers safe. So that's one of the things that I would bring. I've also done contract negotiations, managed budgets, and very close to the diversity space and developing policy and actually to the point of teaching classes. So those are some things that I could do in immediate impact. Thanks.
Mr. Missourik.
So I think I have an unfair advantage in this one. Experience does matter. I've actually been on the board for eight years. I've been volunteering, participating as a member of this community for over 10. Earlier this year, I was actually the chairman of the advocacy committee for the renewal of the sinking fund. To prepare for this, I've actually been attending all the board meetings and all the subcommittee, the whole meeting since really June, before I even decided to get involved in it. I have been president. I have been vice president. I have been secretary. I've been on the policy committee. I've been on the budget committee. I've been on the HR committee. I've been involved just about everything there is. So I do bring a lot of experience. But the thing that I want to focus on, and actually, I've already reached out to Mary Kay, and I talked about this earlier, there is this new workshop, which I think the first day is going to be November 9th, so it'll be after the election. But I've actually asked if I could be a member of that workshop where we start to look at the equity piece of our environment and how do we change what we have, start listening to our community and understanding where do we have unheard biases. Thank you.
Mr. Kulkarni, you may unmute yourself.
You know what? I would develop a proactive plan to build the future career of the students with combinations of academic as well as hands-on skill to benefit community as well as help students to make a good citizen. I would really conduct regular seminars to ingrain students with accomplishment and persistent efforts of great people like Bill Gates as well as Steve Jobs, Elon Musk. This is necessary for students to understand that what a good citizen can contribute to the community as well as to the country. And by highlighting these people, students engrain their creativity in their mind so that they can accomplish something good for the community as well as for students. Also, I like to emphasize that education is more about characters, value, and identity, not just smart students or intelligence. To me, intelligence is a tool that can you develop to use characters. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. We are going to have time for an eighth question this evening. Question number eight.
Hi, my name is Melissa Stewart. I'm a member of the PTA board at Hillside, and I have a student at Hillside and a student at Marine. My question is, what is your position on the Wayne County Regional Enhancement Millage renewal proposal that is on the ballot? School districts like Northville contribute more than they receive through the millage. This is intended to provide more equitable resources across all of Wayne County. Thank you.
And we'll begin with Ms. Prescott.
I think this is an easy one for me. We've had the benefit of the millage in the last couple of years, and our board supported it in the last round, asked voters to speak to it. Voters voted for the millage, and it's now up for renewal. We support it again. I voted for that. I've advocated for that. And partly, it's because, to everyone watching, you may not have paid attention to where every dollar and cent went. I did. I can remember voting on the books we bought and the buses we got, new buses, and the furniture we bought. Every single dollar that came in through these millages went directly to kids and improving their educational experience. Does some of the money go to other schools and districts? We can't control that, and it really doesn't come into my mind. If I can get more resources in the door for our kids and spend it on them, I'm going to advocate for that every single time. So I'm a big proponent, and I really hope people will vote yes on this millage.
Up next, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you. Yes, another great question. I'm in favor of it. The board voted on this some number of weeks ago. I paid attention to that vote and their coverage of that issue. I think, like Sarah said, this brings money into our district. It's not a dollar-for-dollar kind of thing. It does also support our Wayne sister schools, Wayne County Sister Schools. This is a renewal, so it's not a tax increase to the folks in our community. But I'm for every dollar that we can get in this district. We face significant disadvantages when it comes to the funding that we get relative to peer schools like Birmingham, Bloomfield, even Farmington and Southfield. Those schools get something like 40% to 50% more than we do from the state. So any additional funding that we can get, I'm all in favor of it. I do think that we should carefully scrutinize these things, think about how the money's going to be spent. I think we scrutinized the sinking fund renewal in March. We did the same thing with this one. It brings dollars into the district. I'm in favor of it.
Ms. Campbell Voightel.
Yes, I was very gratified when I saw that the board voted unanimously, I believe, in the last meeting to support the millage, the enhancement millage that is going to be on the ballot. I am completely in support of this enhancement millage. It is program money. And I think the estimate is that we're going to return, we'll receive $300 per pupil to our district. And that is money that can be spent on lowering class sizes, to bringing in enhancement programs, both for our special ed kids but also our kids in general ed. It adds the kinds of things that we've talked about tonight, STEM and career education programs. And it makes facility improvements beyond what we have already funded in our bond. It's essential. We don't have any other levers to pull to increase our funding for programmatic spending. So to all of you who are on this call, please support the enhancement millage in the vote today. Thank you.
Mr. Mathie.
Well, this is certainly the easiest question to answer of the evening. As a renewal proposal, it is, of course, I think has the support of not only everybody on this forum today, but probably everybody who's tuned in to listen to us speak. It is absolutely essential that we find more resources for education. You will never find me in a situation where I think we ought to find, we ought to reduce the amount of money available for us to do what is the single most important thing we can do as members of this community, which is to ensure that the next generations coming up behind us have the absolute best resources available to them to make their way in the world. We are a high-achieving community, full of innovative thinkers and leaders in all aspects of business. And I think that to take any measures to secure and increase our funding is paramount.
Ms. Winfield.
Yes, this is something that I would support. I mean, the main thing I look at is, is this going to support our kids, our students? There's lots of priorities that need to be accomplished and have been very well articulated on this call. And in order to do so, we need the funding. So I agree with everyone else. This is a pretty easy one. Absolutely, I support it.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Kulkarni. You can unmute yourself, Mr. Kulkarni.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Oh, I'm sorry, you muted yourself again.
Can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yes, we can hear you.
Here. That way, we can contribute to the society as well as to the new programs that are coming up there. Because students need a lot of support from us. We should not be cutting down their expenses. We need to develop new technical facilities and as well hire new counselors. So we need to expand ourselves to enhance the safety as due to the COVID and other programs that are coming up there. As other speakers mentioned, I would fully support all the renewal of this millage. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Mr. Missourik, we're going to have you start next.
Okay. One of the things I wanted to say was that I want you to know that Northville is one of the largest donor districts in the state. What that means is we provide way more dollars to the state than we get back. I think on this particular proposal, if it passes, we'll get something like less than 48 cents. I think it'll probably be closer to 44 cents on every dollar we provide to the state. So from a shareholder value or from the parental community value, it stinks. It's lousy. It's not the best way to use our money, however. We are in a situation right now where the pandemic is creating lots of costs. We're losing some 200, we're down 265 students, I think, which means losses of funding. Prop A, which was passed 20-some years ago, ties our hands, and there's no way for us to get increased funding. So, well, I think this is a lousy deal for our community. This is one that I'm going to actually hold my nose, and I will support it. But honestly, I wish we could find a better way. And I think one of the things we do need to do is push back on the state and say, it's time proposal A gets relooked at, and we find a new way to fund schools.
And Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. Yeah, I too have been listening to the board meetings since June, I think, and was really happy to hear that the board supported this new, the enhancement millage renewal. It is difficult that, as a donor district, we don't get a full return on each dollar that we are investing. Equity across our state is helpful for everyone, I believe, although it is difficult for us as the taxpayers to continue to fund programs that aren't benefiting us directly, but indirectly they do benefit us. So yes, I absolutely would support the millage renewal. I think it's crucial. Every dollar counts when you're looking at education. We know, like Mr. Missourik mentioned, we are going to have some decreases in funding based on, you know, the number of students that have not re-enrolled. We also are looking at decrease in funding in terms of income taxes, sales tax, you know, with, our state is losing revenue. We are going to be in a unique situation. So definitely support this millage renewal so that we're at least in a decent place moving forward. And I would agree. I think it's important at some point for a district like ours to push back and say, let's relook at the constitution in terms of how schools are funded. So thank you. I would be in support of this as well.
Thank you. Thank you to all the candidates. We will now begin with our closing remarks. Each candidate will have 90 seconds, minute and a half, to deliver closing remarks, also in a predetermined random order. We will begin with Ms. Campbell Voitel.
Well, thank you to you, Tanya, and your team on the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. It's been great, and I really value the fact that we have live audience, and I'm sure that that highly represents our families and our students and our teachers. So it's been an honor for me. There's been a number of great responses to the questions, and great questions. So I'm just going to focus on a couple of thoughts. And as I've been known to say, it's clear that this has been a trying time for all of us as we embrace this new normal. The walls of the classroom have expanded to include our kitchen counters and our dining room tables. And teachers are embracing kids wherever they bring, they find them and bring them into this unprecedented learning moment. And it is an unprecedented learning moment because it is both virtual and hybrid and face-to-face, but with masks and distance and barriers. So the school board too has an obligation to share in this heavy lifting and to protect academic excellence and to ensure that we attend to the needs of kids at every point along the achievement spectrum, to champion continuous improvement and to certainly to, in areas that are in terms of diversity. So with that, I would say I am a candidate that brings experience that I think that can help in these areas. Please consider voting for me when you fill in your ballot. Thank you.
Up next, we have Mr. Wilson.
Hi, thank you, Tanya and the PTA. Thanks for everyone that's joined tonight as well. I understand the issues that we face as a district. I have kids at Ammerman Elementary, Hillside Middle School, and Northville High School. I bring fresh, forward-thinking ideas and a vision for not only getting us through COVID, but for taking our district to the next level. I'm a scientist and I'm a lawyer. I've served as a federal prosecutor for the Department of Justice in Washington DC, where I was entrusted with serving the public interest and holding the public's trust on behalf of the United States. I have a biology degree from U of M. I was a biologist, a chemist, before I pursued my law school at Michigan State. Today, I'm a corporate counsel for a Fortune 500 company where I've made hundreds, if not thousands, of decisions in countless areas of the law. I'm a father to kids in all levels in this district. I'm in the trenches every day with them. I'm logging them into Schoology, coaching their softball teams. I'm on the, I was on the Ammerman Dads Club. I'll have kids in this district for the next nine years. I understand the issues. I value our teachers. In fact, last night, I was honored with an endorsement from the NEA. That's the voice of our teachers. As a board member, I would focus on getting through COVID as a community, student mental health, happiness, and inclusion, continuous improvement at all levels, top-down support for our wonderful teachers and principals, and protecting our funding and financing. Thank you to the PTA and everyone tonight.
Up next, Mr. Missourik. Mr. Missourik.
I'm sorry, I was muted. Let me start again. I want to thank the PTA for setting this up and the audience for listening. I was a board member from 2010 to 2018 and took on many other roles to ensure we delivered the best education we could for our children. I dedicated 10 years serving our community and the district. I've been part of the strategy and goal planning efforts that have made Northville one of the top school districts in the state. Our schools are a key part of why people come to Northville. We're a large district, but with a small-town feel. It's the community working together, discussing the issues we face in a respectful manner, that allowed us to achieve these great successes. I'm convinced we can continue that success if we work together, taking all perspectives into account to achieve a common, well-thought-out approach to the issues we face, those being educational excellence, using online, financial stability, social emotional health, teacher shortages, which we haven't even talked about, and really the continuous communication to constituents. My past experiences professionally and on the board provide the knowledge and the expertise to help us meet our most important goal, keeping academic achievement for all students as our number-one priority. I humbly ask for your support. Please vote for me, Jim Missourik, on November 3rd. And as someone else said, experience does matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Ms. Winfield. There we go. I'll wait for the timer. Ms. Winfield, you're up next.
Okay, thank you so much. I would like to thank you for inviting me to be a part of this panel. The number-one reason my family moved to Northville 16 years ago was because of the academic standard of the district. In that way, I've not been disappointed, but I don't ever think any institution, organization, community should rest on its laurels. I do believe in continuous improvement. I feel that in me, there is a story, there is a voice, and there's a demographic that is currently missing from the Board of Education. I think that I bring unique qualifications and experience that can directly impact and enhance the goals of where we want to go and need to be as a community, as a district. And when I say that, I think at times, and this is the time where some new leadership is called for. And with my experience with 28 years as a human resources manager at Fort Motor Company, I think I'm uniquely qualified to bring a lot of that experience. I've already talked about my experience with health and safety protocols and with honestly just dealing with people and learning and doing things in a collaborative fashion. So the three things I want to leave you with is W, and that's for the wellness, the health and safety of our kids and our teachers in our community, inclusion. Every child, not just mine, deserves to feel valued, respected, and cared for. And the last piece is around nurturing, and it kind of goes along with the inclusion, where I want our kids to feel safe and protected. So remember, look down ballot, Winfield is last on the ticket, and I appreciate your support on November 3rd. Thank you.
Up next, Ms. Prescott.
Hi, everyone, and thank you to the PTA and all the great questions tonight. We are going to have fresh faces on our board in January. That is a given with four seats coming open. But after five years of pouring all of myself that I passively could give into my role as a trustee, I thought I had more to give, and I agree that we have more road to walk to keep our schools the best they can be. I'm a Harvard-trained lawyer. I worked my way through Northwestern and Harvard. I met a guy there. We got married. He's a professor. Our entire lives are about education, and my type A drive for perfection is both poured into my three kids, who are all under age 11, and I want the best schooling for them. But it's also poured into my professional career. And I'm a small business owner in this community. I started a law firm, and my professional training and expertise is in the kinds and the areas of the law where schools are most often sued. And that A-type mama bear protective side of me gets poured into every discussion and decision we have for the school board. How can I protect our board best? All of the priorities we've talked about here tonight, we can't achieve them if we're depleted and distracted by lawsuits. So I add that aspect. I want to thank our teachers for their endorsement and ask you all to consider voting for me on November 3rd.
Up next, Mr. Mathie.
Well, let me begin by thanking you all for this opportunity to speak with you this evening and to share in some of the opinions of the other candidates running for the sport. This election is taking place at a truly extraordinary time. We are at one time faced with both unprecedented challenges and equally unprecedented opportunities, the likes of which none of us has experienced before. COVID has placed our students, staff, and community in very real danger. We, as leaders, now must determine how best to protect quality education and how our community and our community from a threat that has already taken the lives of over five times out of gun-related deaths per year and only in a fraction of the time. The Black Lives Matter movement that we've discussed briefly this evening, irrespective of your personal or political opinions, has laid bare the disparity between how different races and genders view this American experience and has challenged each of us to reevaluate how we relate to the members of our very own communities. But we are also finding new and wildly flexible changes in how we live and work. With the expansion of work-from-home and remote learning technology, there are amazing opportunities for access to expanded curriculums and alternative approaches to education or teaching methods to liberate both students and teachers from the limited approach education that we currently have used that fails to fully engage so many of our exceptional children and teach to them in ways that resonate. I have never before felt as if my talents and the skills that I developed in my life as a marine, as an inventor, as an entrepreneur, biomedical engineer, scientist, and as a parent have ever been better suited to meet the complex challenges we face in the coming years and to make
Thank you, Ms. Campbell.
with these innovative solutions. So I ask for your support on November 3rd.
Thank you. Ms. McIntyre.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya, and the Northville PTA Council and our community for showing up and listening and engaging with us tonight. You know, as a mom of three children who've been in Northville Public Schools, starting with my youngest, who started in preschool at Ridgewood, we've been through a couple different schools in our experience here, and I think I'm uniquely suited to this position for school board, even though I haven't been on the school board recently, currently. I believe that my PTA experience at Ridgewood is very valuable in understanding the challenges that teachers face and that the parents face and that students face in terms of this difficult time in our community and in our world. The endorsement I received yesterday by the Northville Education Association, I think, is also validation that the teachers also agree that our schools would greatly benefit, from my perspective, as a mental health professional, looking at ways to collaborate across teams, to implement programs for students, families, and staff while engaging our community towards a common goal is very critical in times like this. My youngest child will graduate in 2030, and our time to focus on wellness and inclusion is now. I'm so proud of our Northville schools for being flexible and innovative and really driving to maintain the level of excellence, which we want to continue to protect so that we can assure that each student's potential can become a reality. We really need to expand the ways that Northville Public School supports educators, focuses on positive outcomes for physical and mental wellness, and addresses inclusion. So I really hope I can count on your vote on November 3rd or with your absentee ballot. Thank you so much for your time.
And Mr. Cole Carney, you can unmute yourself.
Is he still on?
We, I actually see him in the, I don't know if we can pull him out of there. He's towards the end of the list.
I just promoted him to, excuse me, panelist, so he should be joining us shortly.
Thank you, Sarah.
Yes, I thank Northville Council of PTA for allowing me to participate in the forum. I seek an opportunity to establish technical facility at school and to bolster our current hands-on program. I do have two grandchildren at Ridgewood High School. One is at the fifth level, and one is kindergarten. So I do know that what difficulty they are facing, and I like to work with members as well as community to alleviate difficulties of students as well as community. Also, I like to hold on top priority with the safety of community while supporting their vision of educational excellence. I'm looking forward to school, to be a member of school board member, and apply my skill of 44 years for the safety of community and to raise school standard bar to help students to build their future career. In addition to that, I like to lead students to build the robots and participate in the first robotic national competition. This is necessary for students to understand that what it takes to compete in the real world. Also, I like to engrain creativity in the students, invite multidisciplinary professionals from community to deliver seminar about approaches they follow to acquire the skill. This way, both community as well as teacher are all are involved to improve the standard of students as well as to make them good citizens. This is, I like to do it, and I request everybody to support me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole Carney. Next slide, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Meyer, and I'm the Northville Council of PT's advocacy chair. As we conclude tonight's forum, we have an Oscar-speech-worthy amount of people to thank for making this happen. First of all, thank you to all the participating candidates. Thank you to the district specifically, but definitely not limited to Superintendent Mary Kay Gallagher, Megan Irving, and Sarah Jacobs. Thank you to everyone who submitted their thoughtful questions and the wonderful volunteers who read them. Thank you to all the behind-the-scenes volunteers. I also would like to personally thank Tanya Pitkin and Kelly Masters, whose passion, hard work, and dedication never ceases to amaze me. Last but not least, we would like to thank everyone for joining us tonight. We hope this forum has provided information that was valuable to you as you go to vote. If you are voting absentee, you should have received your ballot by now. If you are mailing it, we suggest that you put two stamps on it and get it in by October 20th. However, you can always take it directly to your clerk's office. Please see their website Please see their websites for extended hours and additional information. The Northville Council of PTAs, as Tanya mentioned at the beginning, is a nonprofit 501(c)(3), and we cannot and do not endorse candidates. However, we have enjoyed the privilege of providing our community with this forum. This is but one example of the many, many things that PTAs throughout our community do on behalf of students and families. If you haven't already, we ask that you join us today and become a PTA member. From parents, grandparents, guardians, students, staff, teachers, and community members, there may not be an "I" in PTA, but we see you in it. Thank you, everyone. Good night and happy voting.
Good night.
Good night, and thanks to all of you for making it happen.
Thank you. Yes, good night.
Thank you. This was wonderful. Really appreciate your time. Everybody's very engaged. I appreciate that.
Good night. Thank you very much, all the speakers.
Thank you for letting me participate, and good night.